I will call the meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Item number two, we have recognition of Lisa Lamb on her retirement after forty-six years with the Blackhawk County. That's an impressive feat. So Lisa, come on up here. Or do you want to say anything?
Hey.
All right. Excuse me, Tom. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, Lisa, for forty-six years.
Forty-six years.
That's remarkable.
And I don't live over twenty-eight.
You know, it's a young name. Because when I get emails from you and I'm visualizing, you know, I, we all go there. But that's the sign of a good organization. And I think a lot of credit goes to past boards because just a couple of weeks, we had an employee of fifty years, now forty-six. Grant with forty, right? And many others. I mean, that's the sign of a strong organization. So the past boards deserve a lot of credit for creating the culture that has been created here in the county. And I've been involved in several governments, municipal governments, a couple of cities, now Blackhawk County. This is the best I've been involved in. So Lisa, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so you get all of us in here?
So what is it, they move into?
Hey, old man.
Lisa, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Lisa.
Thanks so much.
Now the board can clear out.
What's got me thinking, if I can work for the county for forty-three more years, how old will I be? How old am I? Over a hundred?
Good luck with that.
Me and Tom.
Can't handle it either. That'll be retirement age then. Forty-five, fifty-five.
All right, public comments. Do we have anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? No one has approached the podium. Do we have anybody on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide public comment? Claims and payments, Mr. Perry.
This week's expenditures total one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. We have secondary roads with sixty-three thousand, one forty-five. The board general supervision account, fifteen thousand, six eighty-five. That is our first payment for the Grundy Road project. And then an unemployment premium payment for eighteen thousand, six fifteen. Everything looked normal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a resolution at the Board of Supervisors to approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
So James, on the money for Grundy Road, is Grundy County paying their half right along with ours each time?
Yes, they are. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be the fiscal agent for that. So we're going to turn, we're going to receive the bill. You know, any invoices that we're going to receive, we're going to pay. And then we're going to go ahead and invoice Grundy the exact same time. So then they're going to pay us back. And that's just, it's, so really what we're going to see is we're going to see eight million dollars in expenditures, but we're going to receive four million dollars in revenue. And that's just kind of how it has to be set up, so.
Thank you.
But.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Item number five, project updates from department heads, elected officials. Kathy.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. So speaking of Grundy Road, PCI is making good progress on that, on the project. They've started at the southwestern, excuse me, the south portion of the project on Zeneta Road and moving to the north. They've completed approximately a quarter of a mile. There's a hog confinement a quarter of a mile south, excuse me, north of Zeneta. So they wanted to get that portion done entirely, and then they'll move to the north. And then the vehicles can come in from the south to service that hog confinement. So things are going well out there on Grundy Road. Yesterday, on another project yesterday, we had a walkthrough with the Iowa DOT on Cedar River Bridge on Cedar Wopsey Road. That project is federal aid, so we do have to have a review by, with the DOT. We are nearly complete. We did a punch list walkthrough on that project and just a few items left to be completed and dressed up. A few of the slopes still need to be dressed up. The conservation area, the parking lots look really nice. They're much larger than they were before. And then lastly, yesterday, we began work on the Canfield Road overpass on Highway Twenty. We are removing the concrete on both sides of that overpass. So that work began yesterday and with our detour in place from Pointa Road up to Raymond Road back over to Dubuque Road. So we are, construction is well underway this year. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Kathy, I just had one question. I guess it was on the Wheeler Road notification you sent out. Have we heard back from anyone on that?
In our office, to my knowledge, we haven't received any emails or phone calls about the bridge being closed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Morning.
I just wanted to give an update on the survey that was sent out a couple of weeks back for the micromarket and just kind of let you guys know what responses we got. Of the people who took the survey, sixty-five percent of the employees said that they would utilize the micromarket, and then thirty-five percent said they would not. A couple of questions that were asked is, did they utilize the deli when it was open? Where do they generally take their lunch, just in case we wanted to make that area kind of like a break room area? Do they usually bring their lunch or do they order something? If they ever heard of the micromarket before or if, and the last one was if they would utilize it. I also did contact five of the businesses that capital vending has sent to us. And I asked HR how their staff responded to the micromarket, and it's, they said that they responded pretty well. Even the employees that were kind of unsure about it at first seemed to be coming around and warming up to it. It's, they said it was stocked frequently, it's very efficient, it was used frequently. One of the things that one company said that they liked is that the, sorry, I just lost my notes here. They said that the refrigerators, they are temperature controlled, and so when they dip below a certain temperature, the door will lock so that way employees cannot get it and risk food contamination. And so then they have somebody come in and fix the machine, so.
The percent on the survey, what are you talking about, people, how many?
Forty-two. So I did send it out to the department heads and said, all staff take it, and I only got forty-two.
Forty-two is all you got?
Yeah.
I think you mentioned in an email too, that the next step, if we were to go ahead with that, was like with the Department of Inspections.
Yes.
For some type of an application process?
Right. So if we wanted to go through with the micromarket, we would have to submit an application to the Iowa Department of Inspections, and then they would work with our county health department to determine if it was safe to put a micromarket in there.
What's, have you had any discussion with Randall's? What's their plans as far as reopening up the deli this year?
So we did, we talked to Randall's, I believe it was last week. And they said that there is one employee in particular that's still not comfortable with coming in, and so they're just kind of holding off on coming back in.
You have no immediate plans to open up?
As far as I'm concerned, no. Or as far as I know, no.
So did Rory talk with him? Because he called the other day and since, wanted to set up an appointment with me and Rory to talk about it.
Hello, Board. Rory Givens, superintendent. Yeah, I did reach out and I talked with DJ. As Dana had indicated, there was one employee that he said that was still uncomfortable being in a crowd. So I did explain to him what we were looking at. He just said, keep him in the loop. If this is something we want to go, then we'll move forward with how to get out of the contract.
It's a tough business with spring coming on and starting something new like this because usually people like to get outside and walk at lunchtime or go get something.
Yep. I think, yeah, and you're absolutely right.
Upset this time of the year of starting something.
The nice thing about the micromarket from our standpoint is the only expense that we're putting out would be the electricity for the machines. So it would be on them to, again, service the food in there, basically manage the whole setup even with regards to cameras.
If they were damaged?
They would have a camera system put in there.
Are we responsible for the damage?
No. No. No, so there's really a very minimal liability on our end.
I wish we would have had a larger sample of forty-two employees.
Yeah, that's, sometimes that's a bit difficult.
Sixty-five percent in favor of forty-two is not a huge number.
No.
Would it be possible for maybe some of us to go and see one of these, like in person? My one question is just wondering if it's food that's designed to be in, these things is probably really full of preservatives and whether we're providing like a healthy options for our employees in particular.
I believe the post office has one. I'm not mistaken.
Well, actually, is in the machines, did they tell you? I mean, what type of food or?
So there is a couple of different things. They do have, they have sandwiches that are prepackaged and pre-made, kind of something similar that if you go to Hy-Vee and they have like that little area right there. They do have chips, they do have frozen items, like little Smart Choice TV dinners. They do have chips. They have, I saw for one example, they had like those little frozen burritos, frozen sandwiches that you can heat up. One place even offered like Tylenol and some small medicines in case somebody had like a headache or if they needed eye drops that were down there, so. I did see wraps.
Then they provide a microwave?
They do not provide a microwave, but we already have a microwave downstairs.
How would they expect that if, say, we didn't have one? How would they expect people to utilize their food if they didn't have a microwave?
Then we would just tell them not to put in microwavable stuff. I mean, they go off of what we ask them to put in there. So if we didn't have a microwave and didn't plan on putting in a microwave, we wouldn't request that that be put in there. But we do have, our microwave and other departments do have microwaves.
And this service wouldn't be bid out because the blind association has the rights to?
Correct. So for any government building, the Iowa Department of the Blind has first priority on what gets put in that building as far as food goes.
I mean, as far as picking the contractor, they have the authority of, the board doesn't.
Correct.
Or the county.
Right.
So if we did want to do a visit, we'd work through you to set that up or do something like that, just to pop over and see?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
It's intriguing.
Lunchtime, maybe not.
All right. Anything else, Dana?
No, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Morning.
Fessenmeyer, HR Director. So just a quick update, we have open enrollments coming up for our employees. So just want to remind employees that beginning in May, it is their opportunity to elect, waive, or change benefit elections for the plan year beginning July first. So we'll be sending out communication from our office today. It'll be out on eSuite when people do their time cards to remind them that the month of May is their chance to make a change, or ask any questions, so.
How do they actually get the notification, the individual employee?
So we send it out as like a mass email to departments and administrative contacts and then?
So they'll get an email?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And that's just what's been done in the past. We have looked at possibly utilizing our time card system to do open enrollment so that it's all done electronically. We're a little ways from possibly looking at that, maybe in another year or two. But that is something that we might be looking at doing, so. Just wanted to remind everyone of that coming up.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else in the boardroom that would like to provide an update? Anybody on Zoom? Any department head or elected official on Zoom that would like to provide an update? All right, we'll move on to item number six, approval of the minutes for April twentieth. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. It is approved. The consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, I'm still catching up. I can't tell the difference between the? Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Item number eight, contracts and agreements. Eight A, resolution that the contract between Blackhawk County and Dave Grape Construction Incorporated, Williamsburg, Iowa, quotes due March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one at three PM for project LFM dash six zero zero, long dash seven three dash zero seven, FY twenty-one guardrail project with a total bid of one hundred nine thousand, one hundred and three dollars and fifty cents. Completion date of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Liquidated damages, eight hundred dollars per day. Be approved and direct the chair to sign for same and to receive in place and file the contractor's bond and certificate of insurance as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer. Kathy?
Yeah, I've told you about this in the past. We did receive the one bid back from three guardrail contractors here in Iowa. It was over our engineer's estimate. We have a continuing need to update outdated guardrail. As you know, vehicles are now taller than they were in the seventies and the eighties and the nineties. There are more people are driving in trucks, larger vehicles, so guardrail height has increased over the past fifty years. We have not kept up with some of those standards on many of our bridges. So several of these bridges, they have either been damaged or the wooden posts are rotting. We can make some repairs, but we can't, one of the bridges, we, it had been damaged through an accident. We were not able to claim any compensation from the accident. Rather than repair it with an older standard, we just decided it's a better idea to just upgrade that guardrail at this time, replace it with what's in, would be in compliance now with these three structures. Can I answer any particular questions about a particular bridge or?
What was the estimate again?
The estimate was, I believe, eighty-three thousand. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number.
What was actually budgeted for this?
About the eighty-three, eighty-three, yes, eighty-three thousand, yes. That's what we.
And one of them was damaged in an accident?
So I want to say, the one on Desert Road and the one on Brandon Road, I believe, had been hit in the last several years. In some cases, we are able to go out and replace the wooden posts on these guardrail systems, but that may have, we still have a substandard, either height or an end treatment. I'm sure you're familiar with some of the end treatments where it's, the bulb nose is just the round guardrail ending, end treatment. Those are no longer meeting, those are no longer complying with federal safety regulations. Now you'll see a system where if it's hit, it slides, it collapses and goes forward. So you, so the occupant of the car is, you know, being protected because it's collapsing. So the DOT is more, of course, larger agencies are changing out their guardrail systems faster than we are. So we do have a mix of many outdated guardrails around the county on our paved road system. And we are in the process of updating them as, you know, when we're able to do so.
You've probably said before how many we have probably guardrails that need to be replaced, but I don't remember.
That's a good question. I don't know an exact answer. I would say probably at least half of the guardrail on the paved road system probably needs to be updated.
And that could be either repaired or replaced. You said you can do some repairs?
Right. If it's simply a matter of replacing the wooden posts, we're able to do that. Nowadays, the newer systems, the end treatments don't have wooden posts, they have a steel post. And then many times there are particular steel components that attach that steel post to the guardrail so that it collapses, for example. Those are the pieces we either don't have because we don't, we haven't kept up with the standards, or we don't have them in stock, we have to order them, and they're outdated anyway, so it's just better to upgrade it rather than spend the money on and keep up with an outdated standard.
That makes sense.
We have quite a combination of years of guardrail throughout the county. And this is very typical of counties here in Iowa.
How often do they change the standards?
It seems to be that it's every ten or fifteen years. There's quite a process, there's a lot of, there is good documentation of what's, what standards are. It's just that standards are expensive to stay current with.
Steel's expensive too.
Sure.
Yeah.
Especially the price of what it was last year at this time.
I know. Yes. Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Item number nine A, a resolution that the renewal agreement between Blackhawk County and National Insurance Services, Madison National Life, for the county's basic life insurance, AD and D insurance, voluntary life insurance, and long-term disability insurance policies with no rate adjustments, effective July first, twenty-twenty-one, be approved and direct the chair to sign the renewal letters recommended by Amanda Fessenmeyer, Human Resources Director and Perspective Consulting Partners LLC. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
I just wanted to briefly mention quick. So the next four items are all related to renewal agreements for the county provided insurance for employees. So Stacy Wanderscheid of Perspective Consulting Partners is available at the meeting via Zoom. She has a few talking points to go over for each agreement as you guys go through them, and then I'll be available for questions as well. So Stacy, if you want to go ahead and cover this first one?
Thank you. Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Stacy Wanderscheid with Perspective Consulting Partners in Urbendale, Iowa. Coming to you from my home though this morning, as we work remote. The first item there on the national Madison National Insurance, the voluntary life and long-term disability were offered a renewal with no change to the current rates for one year, and there have been no benefit changes. So these rates will continue as they are today through six-thirty of twenty-two.
All right. That's it on that item. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Jamison, I mean, Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Item number nine B, a resolution that the alternate two base plan renewal agreement between Blackhawk County and Delta Dental as the county's dental plan administrator, effective July first, twenty-twenty-one, with an increase to, with an increase to administration fees, four dollars and seventy-two cents P E P M, and no increase to rates for the single base option or to the family base option, be approved and the chair directed to sign the financial exhibit as recommended by Amanda Fessenmeyer, Human Resources Director and Perspective Consulting Partners LLC. It's been moved and seconded. Amanda?
So, and I'm going to let Stacy, she's got a couple of talking points here. So the administrative fee, that was agreed upon two years ago, it was a three-year plan. So it has increased as we expected it to, from four dollars and fifty-nine cents to four dollars and seventy-two cents. Stacy, if you want to go ahead and cover anything else with regards to our Delta Dental Plan?
Yep. The plan with Delta Dental is self-funded, so you pay the administration fee and then fund the dental claims as they come through. The dental plan fund is in good standing, and so no increase to the accrual rates are necessary in order to fully fund the plan.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Item nine C, a resolution that alternate two buy-up plan renewal agreement between Blackhawk County and Delta Dental is the?
Yep. So here, we looked at refreshing, updating the dental benefit. So we're actually increasing the lifetime, the lifetime maximum from seven fifty to one thousand on the base plan and from fifteen hundred to two thousand on the buy-up plan. This is in line with other public entities with which Delta Dental works and with which Perspective Consulting Partners works. And since your plan was in, your plan fund was in good standing, the change will be supported with no increase to the accrual rates.
Okay, and this is a renewal agreement between Blackhawk County and, it was so similar to the previous one, I had to take a look at.
Yeah, this is the buy-up plan, so we have, yeah, we have two plans. So the first is the base, and this is the buy-up.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that this resolution with Delta Dental as the company's dental plan administrator, effective July first, twenty-twenty-one, with an increase to administration fees, four dollars and seventy-two cents P E P M, and no increase to rates for the single buy-up option or the family buy-up option, be approved and the chair directed to sign the financial exhibit as recommended by Amanda Fessenmeyer, Human Resources Director and Perspective Consulting Partners LLC. It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Item nine D, a resolution that the renewal agreement between Blackhawk County and Avisus as the county's voluntary vision plan provider, effective July first, twenty-twenty-one, with no rate increases, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Amanda Fessenmeyer, Human Resources Director and Perspective Consulting Partners LLC. I will second. Any comments, questions?
Pretty self-explanatory here, just the vision plan, and go ahead, Stacy, if you want to highlight this one as well.
Sure. Avisus, this is a fully insured voluntary vision benefit. There's no changes to this coverage, and the renewal that Avisus presented was a two-year with no rate increase. So these rates then are good through six-thirty of twenty-three.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to mention that this was also covered at our annual meeting. We meet with Tim Jamison, our real estate systems tax manager, and then our finance director, James Perry, as well, with Perspective to go over our plan designs and to see how that fund is doing in order to determine what we should be providing as an organization. So that was done earlier this month. And any questions at all that I can help answer?
Can we ask Tim a bunch of questions?
Ask Tim a bunch of questions?
Yeah, he said not to, but.
Oh, there, go for it. No, he's done an excellent job managing that, that us being self-funded is a little, you know, unique, and for stepping into that role, both he and James and I are all fairly new to this process, and it was a really good experience to go through with Perspective, and I really appreciated their insight because they have quite a bit of a history with us, so. But that's it for the renewals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes. Item nine E, a resolution to amend the minutes in reading of the Blackhawk County Compensation Board's salary schedule for fiscal year 2022 from the Board of Supervisors meeting on February 23rd, 2021.
So moved.
Second. Rick James, were you gonna comment?
Yes. Um, yeah, so this is, uh, amending the minutes for reading of the compensation for the elected officials. Uh, this was my error. When we were computing a three percent increase, I was using a wrong dollar amount to do that. Uh, and a little bit of background on that is when, for elected officials only, we, we, we approve an increase to an annual salary. Everybody else in the county, we approve an increase to their hourly salary. So what we do is when we look at the elected officials, we actually back into an hourly rate by dividing that by how many hours are in the year. When we input that into our system, our system can't calculate how many hours are in the year, so it auto calculates an annual rate based off of that. So that in our system is essentially incorrect. And so when I was running my reports, I didn't quite catch that because I guess that's just something I didn't notice right away. So when I did the one percent increase for the, uh, for the elected officials, it was slightly, it was slightly under what, what needs to be done. So, um, I've provided a, a document to reread them. Uh, I can reread them, Grant can reread them, um, or we can just kinda move on and, and approve them, but, um, however you guys wanna do it, we are.
James, reread them.
You got it. Uh, county auditor, eighty-nine thousand, thirty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. County attorney?
Eighty-nine or eighty? Okay.
Eighty-nine.
This is the old one.
Okay. Eighty-nine thousand, thirty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents, uh, one hundred, or, excuse me. County attorney, one hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. Uh, county supervisors, forty-one thousand, six sixty-eight, sixty-five. County recorder, eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and sixty-eight cents. Uh, county sheriff, one hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents. And county treasurer, eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and sixty-eight cents.
All right. We do have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
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 Any other comments or questions?
Thanks, James.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Swart?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes. Item nine F, a motion to appoint Rosario Gallmeyer to the Deferred Compensation Committee to fill the vacancy left by Mary Ann Kurtenbach. It's been moved and seconded. Oh, any comments or questions?
I guess just so we'd note, that's effective today's date rather than a previous.
Uh, yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. It is approved. Nine G, a motion that the appointment of James Perry and Michael Trinum to the Blackhawk County Insurance Committee be approved, effective April 27th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those aye, all those opposed, say no. It is approved. Item nine G, discussion county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19. There is none? Item number ten, any reports or information from the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no.